A roll call?
Yes. Councilwoman Erin?
Here.
Mayor Potemblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Warburg?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grassley?
I'm here, thank you. The invocation and the pledge this evening will be led by Councilor Wright. Mr. Wright, the floor is yours.
Is there the mic or is that? Do I have it or?
No, you can just, you can just.
Stand up?
Yep.
All right. All right.
Ask if you stand if you're able.
I'm gonna try and do this without the mic, but we thank God for having given us this opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen. Praise the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, going to see first up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? Can I get someone to make an addition for D three, approval of the Command Union Officers Agreement and a D four appointment to the Planning Commission?
Your Honor.
Ms. Bliss?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adding these items to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Items are added. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go straight to our presentations. First up is National Public Works Week Proclamation for May fifteenth through the twenty-first. Ms. Marsh?
City Council is being requested to approve a proclamation declaring the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two as National Public Works Week. This proclamation recognizes the hard work performed by the men and women of our Department of Public Services and the contributions these employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. This year's theme is Ready and Resilient, and we encourage our residents to acquaint themselves with the dedicated public works professionals in Madison Heights. And with that, Cory Almas has a PowerPoint presentation that I'm trying to show, but...
Not working?
It's not working.
It's not working.
No, it's not working.
But we also have a proclamation to give to Cory.
All right, so while we do that, Mr. Almas, can I please give you this proclamation on behalf of council? In this, um, do you want me to read it or?
I don't know. I have the computer here working.
All right, so I will read this while we're waiting for the PowerPoint. So, "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Madison Heights. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the employees of the Madison Heights Department of Public Services and their counterparts, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, business owners, civic leaders, and children in Madison Heights to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their communities, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude toward and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas the year twenty twenty-two, twenty thou- ah, twenty twenty-two marks the sixty-second Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Madison Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two National Public Works Week, and urges all citizens, civic leaders, and civic organizations to join with the American Public Works Association in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life." Mr. Almas, if you can take this, and I'd just like to say that I hear from our residents and from our businesses, people who travel through Madison Heights, they always know when they get to Madison Heights when the snow is out there because there isn't any here, because our, our group, our DPS, your group, they do such a great job getting everything done. So thank you so much for all that you and your group do.
Thank you.
So I got the PowerPoint working, but your clicker does not. That was interfering.
Uh, this is what was interfering? So it's not gonna work?
This.
So I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to signal you if you don't mind.
You'll have to walk back and forth.
Okay.
You're more than welcome to use my computer.
Talk about resilient. Thank you, Mayor, and esteemed members of council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to introduce the hard-working professionals who represent your Department of Public Services. These are the amazing people who keep our community stronger and as we're working together with all of the city's departments, divisions, our community groups, boards, committees, outside organizations, the school districts, as well as many businesses and residents alike. This year's National Public Works theme is Ready and Resilient. And if you need any more proof that this group is hard-working and dedicated, essential employees, is indeed ready and resilient, just take a look back at how the public services team responded throughout the pandemic. Not a single day was missed. Water and Sewer Divisional responsibilities includes clean water distribution, new water main installation, as well as water main breaks, rip- and repairs. Not a single day was missed. The Streets and Facilities Division responsibilities include snow removal, pothole patching, and building maintenance. Not a single day was missed. The Motor Pool Division, who maintains and keeps the emergency response vehicles and DPS fleet functioning, not a single day was missed. And let's talk for a moment about the resiliency of the Active Adults Center and Recreation Divisions, both of which had to reinvent programs and activities throughout the pandemic, and they all succeeded in brilliant fashion to keep the residents, young and older, engaged and active, and not a single day was missed. This team is indeed ready and resilient. Introducing the supervisory team are Sean Ballantyne, the Public Work Supervisor, Chris Woodward, the Utility Supervisor, Justin Kowalski, the Streets and Facilities Coordinator, and our newest addition to the supervisory team is Dan Yamorino, who's the Motor Pool Supervisor. Our DPS administration includes Sakina Robinson and our new Office Assistant, Allison Russell. And our DPS field staff consists of Water and Sewer Foreman Matt Hallit, Streets and Facilities Foreman Mike Hodson, and Equipment Operators, Operators, Operator Threes Linda Harms, Frank Kelly, and Johnny Broner. Our Equipment Operator Twos consist of Andrew Yusevich, Win Kempton, Aaron O'Brien, Lamont Powell, Scott Brown, and Todd Lewick. And our Equipment Operator Ones are Mike Genolini, Brandon Dodson, Tony Whelan, Nate Carter, and Charles Pritchard, and Wesley Bryant. A year ago, I'd mentioned that one of our DPS Equipment Operators, and also a proud member of the Army National Guard, Nate Carter, was about to be deployed and serve our country overseas. I am thrilled to report that Nate is now home and will be returning to our DPS team later this month. Our DPS Motor Pool Staff and Part-Time Staff are Mario Garuz, a mechanic, and Kyle Ballantyne, a mechanic, and our year-round Part-Time Staff, Kevin Quick, Kevin Green, and Farrell Rogers. The Recreation Division is managed by Rec Coordinator Brooke Eisler, and yet again, let me introduce our new Rec Assistant, Anna Jenkins Shaw. On a side note, the Rec Department is now accepting applications for summer camp counselors. Please refer to the Human Resource tab and the city's website to apply if you know anybody who might be interested. The Active Adults Center is managed by Jennifer Cowan, and the ACC is now completely open for business and offering a wide variety of programs and events, all of which are advertised on the City of Madison Heights website, the Active Adults Center Facebook page, and you can also contact the AC directly for program information at two four eight five four five three four six four. Staff includes Heather Parker, Kathleen Faulkner, Tiffany Poole, and bus drivers John Luftkin, Gail Verbeest, Paul Gill, and a new bus driver to the staff is Bobby Crowell. As I mentioned in last year's presentation, there are many different functions that are encompassed by the Department of Public Services, all of which are tremendous assets to the betterment of our community. Working together with other departments, boards, committees, businesses, and residents makes us a stronger community. Regardless of the circumstances, rain or snow, windy or cold, in the middle of the night, Christmas morning, or Super Bowl Sunday, your public work superheroes are ready for any challenge, resilient in the face of adversity, and proud to serve the community with honor and integrity. Thank you, Mayor Grassley, and members of council for the continued support of your Department of Public Services. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Almas. Our second presentation this evening is the National Police Officers Memorial Week Proclamation. Mrs. Marsh?
City Council is being requested to proclaim May the fifteenth as Police Officer Memorial Day and May the fifteenth through the twenty-first as Police Week to recognize and remember all police officers who have died in the line of duty in this nation.
You have a proclamation for Cory.
Chief Haynes, we should read this. I'm gonna read this one too. All right, so... Mr. Almas, he took the wrong one. We handed you the wrong one? Oops. Sorry about that. Cory, Cory? All right. Nope, they're both... Both got printed. Okay.
Should he print the wrong one? Twice?
That's not right. Okay. So whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls is Police Week, and whereas the members of the Madison Heights Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Madison Heights, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that their members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Madison Heights Police Department has grown to be modern and professional law enforcement agency that provides vital public service, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council call upon the citizens of Madison Heights and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe May fifteenth to the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two as Police Week to commemorate police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved that May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, be observed as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. So, Chief Haynes, I just wanna say, you know, the work that you and your department do, I am in awe of you and them. Every day, you put your lives on the line to keep me and my family and my residents safe. So on behalf of everyone in the city, thank you for everything that you do. All right, next up, we have public hearings. Got the first one?
We have special use approval, twenty-two dash zero-three Cadillac Straits Brewing Company at two seven six five one John R. Road. Cadillac Straits Brewing Company, located at two seven six five one John R. Road, is requesting special use approval for the outdoor seating area associated with the brewery restaurant that serves alcohol. This site is currently zoned B three general business. The seating area is proposed on the east side of the building, adjacent to the parking lot, and utilizes a portion of the private sidewalk in front of the business for permanent outdoor seating. Hours of operation for the outdoor seating area are proposed to match the brewery, which are currently three to ten Tuesday through Friday, and noon to ten on Saturday, and noon to eight on Sunday. The Site Plan Review Committee reviewed the special use application and recommends City Council approve the request for special approval with the following recommendations: A minimum pedestrian pathway width of four feet adjacent to the patio; a permanent enclosure around the outdoor seating area adjacent to the parking lot, such as a metal railing, a brick wall, bollards, or suitable materials subject to approval by the city planner.
All right, thank you. Before council does a vote on this, I'm going to open this up for public hearing. So if there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak regarding this specific special use at Cadillac Straits, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing and ask what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
Yeah, this is an easy one. I move that we approve the request for special approval with the requirement as noted by our city manager.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Ms. Fleming?
All support.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I would just like that. I think this is a fantastic idea. I think it's great for everyone. It's a win-win.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, we have the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget resolution and tax levy.
So we have a public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget resolution, tax levy, and fee schedule. This fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget workshop was held on April the eighteenth, and tonight, we're holding a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed budget pursuant to Section eight point four of the city charter. A resolution has been drafted, which if approved, will adopt the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget, appropriate the funding, establish the property tax levy, and approve several fee adjustments. A millage tax decrease is being proposed for two thousand twenty-three, and no increase in water and sewer rates. The city is currently conducting a rate study related to stormwater with a recommendation expected later this year. Following this public hearing, staff and I recommend that council approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget resolution, tax levy, and fee schedule. And just a reminder, this requires five votes of city council pursuant to Charter Section seven point six.
All right, thank you. Before I request a motion from council, I'm gonna open this up to the public. If anyone would like to specifically speak about the budget resolution and the tax levy, this would be your opportunity. Seeing no one wanting to speak, I'm gonna close public hearing and ask what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Warburg?
I move that council approves F one, our fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget resolution, tax levy, and fee schedule as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Give your name, address anything that identifies you and the city. I ask that you address me directly. The floor is open.
Greetings, one and all. Mary Bush, eleven seventeen East Hudson. That doesn't help. Can't see you guys, but I can see this. So as May is Mental Health Awareness Month, I consider it my obligation to educate the city and certainly our city leaders about mental health and to help reduce the stigma. One symptom that isn't talked about much is called dysphoria. Mental health has such a taboo and stigma that we just don't know as much. We know about fevers. We know fevers are a sign of somebody being ill, but when it comes to mental illness, there's something that we just don't know. And dysphoria is a common term for a psychiatric condition, and it's used to describe discomfort, distress, or unease, that feeling that something is wrong here. It's common in clinical depression, bipolar conditions, generalized anxiety disorder. And I'm not addressing any of the more severe psychiatric illnesses, because this is the one that depression and anxiety are the ones that are most prevalent in society today. To continue the example of physical illness, if we all better understood this symptom, we would know when to get home remedies, over-the-counter remedies, a shaman, priest, or pastor, or medicine man, and when to go to a family doctor, or a mental health professional, or even to the emergency room for mental health care. Related to dysphoria and common for clinical levels of depression, a human may also have the inability to feel pleasure at things that they normally felt pleasure at, loss of interest in things that normally caught our attention, disruptions to, or either major or minor, concentration, feelings of hopelessness, like what's the point? This is never gonna change. Things like low appetite, or a lot of appetite. I just can't get, I'm hungry all the time, that kind of thing. Low energy, sleep disruptions that become chronic. So this is a common psychological state that's usually first seen. Now, for most people, symptoms of, early symptoms of mental illness are just kind of passing. It means, you know, you need to get more sleep, you might need to take a vacation, you might need, you know, somebody to intervene in a relationship, or look at your own self in terms of how you're handling things. But a lot of people become very seriously ill with this. There are three parts to a human upset: thwarted intentions, undelivered communications, and unfulfilled expectations. When somebody has a mental illness, they really struggle to deal with these things that come naturally for the rest of y'all. We are learning that brain chemistry can change based on experience or genetics. For some people, medications are prescribed to help balance the neurotransmitters of the brain so that rewiring can take place, so that people can even learn effective coping skills. Not everyone who goes on psychiatric medication is on it forever. Some people just need to take medication for the rest of their life, like a diabetic or an asthmatic. If you or someone you love is experiencing these common symptoms of mental health conditions, educate yourselves. There's plenty of information out there. Call an expert. Reach out to someone who's trained in the management of mental wellness, not just mental illness. There are employee assistance programs that most employers and every full and part-time employee of Madison Heights has access to this employee assistance program, and it's completely confidential. In order to help break the stigma of psychiatric conditions, I have been a mental health patient since I was seven years old in nineteen sixty-five, when I was found to be neurodivergent. I am one of those who have been on antidepressants and will be for the rest of my life. What does that mean? The same thing as me carrying my asthma inhaler, or taking daily asthma meds. It didn't interfere with me getting a graduate degree. It didn't interfere with me buying a house, owning a home, being an active member of my community, or having an excellent career in human services before I retired. Much has changed since nineteen sixty-five, and I've had the privilege of witnessing both the growing information and technology of mental health and the shift in cultural awareness that allows a world that works for everyone with no one left out. And if anything is important about this to the City of Madison Heights, is that everything you all do has made our community a world that works for everyone with no one left out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and move on to our reports. First up, D one from the DPS Director, the West Nile Virus Reimbursement Resolution. Mrs. Marsh?
The City of Madison Heights is again eligible for reimbursement from the Oakland County for project expenses related to our fight against the West Nile virus. The Department of Public Services will be sending out crews in mid-May to drop larvicide briquettes in each residential catch basin throughout the entire city. These briquettes will last a hundred and eighty days. They prevent mosquito larvae from maturing into adults and significantly reduce the summer mosquito population. Basins will be tested periodically to ensure that the larvicide is doing its job. DPS is also responsible for treating areas of standing water in the parks and commercial and industrial areas, such as stormwater retention and detention ponds and fountains with larvicide monthly. Staff and I recommend council approve the resolution to allow the city to receive reimbursement from Oakland County for three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
I move that we approve this resolution that will allow the city to receive the reimbursement from Oakland County for three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? I support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have D two from the city attorney, offer to purchase the Active Adults Center at two nine four four eight John R. Road.
On March the eighteenth, the city received an offer to purchase the Active Adults Center located at two nine four four eight John R. Road. This offer was the highest and best offer received through our broker, Larry Campbell of Century Twenty-One Campbell Realty. The economic terms of the agreement include a purchase price of one point eight five million dollars. In addition, the city shall be permitted to remain in possession of the Active Adults Center from the date of closing until August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, to permit our residents to continue to utilize the facility unless sooner terminated per the terms of the agreement. The city attorney and I recommend city council accept this offer. If council concurs, appropriate action would be to accept the offer from MMD Acquisition LLC and authorize the city manager to execute the offer to purchase, together with any and all necessary additional documentation.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Warburg?
I move that council accepts the offer for the purchase of the Active Adults Center from MMD Acquisition LLC and authorize the city manager to execute the offer to purchase, together with any and all necessary additional documentation.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have D three that was added this evening for the Command Union Officer Agreement. What is the wish of council? Can I get a motion to approve the agreement, please?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? I'll support.
Ms. Warburg? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up is D four, the appointment to the Planning Commission. Can I please get a motion to appoint Melissa Calnasi, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, to the Planning Commission?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
I will make the motion to approve the mayor's appointment of the person that you just named to the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Soltis?
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. To approve my appointment of Melissa Calnasi to the Planning Commission, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have F one, the DPS Director, the bid award for tree trimming and removal services. Mrs. Marsh?
Branch Tree Service of Warren has been the city's tree contractor for general trimming and tree removal services. They have proven to be a reputable and reliable firm during their tenure, providing excellent quality on work behalf of the city. Unfortunately, Branch Tree Service has informed us that with rising costs due to inflation, they are unable to continue at current pricing and exercise the contract's cancellation clause. In response, staff prepared an invitation to bid for tree trimming and removal services. Twenty-one vendors downloaded the bid documents, and two sealed bids were received, one from Branch Tree Service and one from Lim Walkers Tree and Snow. Lim Walkers ended up being the lowest responsible bidder. Based on their pricing and positive reference checks, staff and I recommend that council award a three-year contract with two one-year extension options for DPS tree trimming and removal services to Lim Walkers Tree and Snow of Okowa, Michigan, at the unit price specified. Funding is budgeted and available.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Erin?
I'd like to motion that we recommend that council award a three-year contract with two one-year extension options for DPS tree trimming and removal services to Lim Walkers Tree and Snow of Avaca, Michigan, at the unit prices specified.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have G1 from the city attorney, ordinance number 2181, the Marijuana Licensing Scoring Ordinance Amendment. This is the first reading. Mrs. Marsh?
At the April 25th city council meeting, ordinance 2181 was postponed until the meeting tonight. At the city's request, legal council has amended the marijuana, medical marijuana license ordinance to allow the city to move forward with selecting an applicant for the city's remaining medical and adult use co-located facility license. This is in pursuant to Section 7-406B of the city's Code of Ordinances. City council may adopt a resolution to establish selection periods for accepting new applications for combined and co-located medical marijuana facilities and adult use marijuana establishments where such license are available to be issued. At the council's direction, city staff has worked to initiate a new application period for the remaining license for a combined and co-located medical marijuana and adult use facility. The scoring and selection of such a facility is in accordance with 7-408 of the marijuana, Article 12 of the marijuana established, shall determine by such criteria provided in Article 11 Medical Marijuana Facilities, Section 7-308, which is basically the scoring of selected applicants. Staff is recommending adjustments to the original scoring to improve the selection process based on lessons learned during the initial marijuana licensing application period. In order to make these scoring alterations, Section 7-308 must be amended to legally incorporate these adjustments. Based upon the approval of this amendment to Section 7-308 and a resolution authorizing a new application period, the city can begin accepting evaluation submissions for the last remaining provisioning processing center for medical marijuana, adult use marijuana license. If city council chooses, ordinance 2181 would be approved on first reading with a second and final reading scheduled for June the 13th.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2181 on first reading with the second reading scheduled for June 13th.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Ms. Warbach? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
Your honor?
Sorry.
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, just on the discussion side, for the sake of those in the audience and watching at home, and I'm getting a really weird echo in my mic.
Yes.
Is everybody else?
Yes.
All right, maybe we can get that fixed. I don't know if the TV room can jump in on that, but just so that everybody watching understands, we normally would do a second reading the next meeting following, but the reason that we have a gap here is so that our city attorney can both change some language as well as get a report out to council that will make sure that we review when we go through the approval on second reading. So, just an FYI, we would normally do it back-to-back meetings, but we need a little bit more time on this one.
All right, thank you. Mr. Soltes, you had something you wanted to say?
I just wanted a roll call, please.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or? All right, seeing no other discussion, clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilwoman Erin?
Yeah.
Mayor Potemblis?
Yes.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes.
Councilor Warbach?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
No.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley?
I vote yes. Motion carries six one. Thank you. And then next up, we have also, I don't know, so from CED director, ordinance 2182, the zoning text amendment for mobile food vending. This is also the first reading.
Ordinance 2182 Mobile Food Vendors applies to mobile food vending on private property within the city. This would exclude food vending that operates under a special event permit. This would create three distinct approval processes: mobile food site approval, mobile food court approval, and mobile food vendor certificate of occupancy. In accordance with this ordinance, before a property could allow a mobile food truck vendor to operate on their property, the owner would need to submit a site plan approval for each mobile food site they intend to operate. In addition, when the mobile food truck vendor wishes to locate on the site as an accessory use, the mobile vendor would need to submit a certificate of occupancy. This ordinance also allows for mobile truck food courts as a principal use. This would require special use approval through city council and a site plan approval. Food trucks located in the court would require a mobile food truck certificate of occupancy. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed text amendment at their April 19th meeting, and after the public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed amendments with minor modifications. These modifications have been incorporated in the draft for city council review. Staff recommends city council approve on first reading and schedule the second and final reading for the next council meeting on May the 23rd.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve ordinance 2182 on first reading and schedule the second and final reading for the meeting of May 23rd.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Mr. Wright?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have minutes. Can I please get a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from April 25th?
Your honor?
Mr. Wright?
Motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from April 25th, 2022.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor? I support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. That concludes the regular portion of this meeting. I now invite closing comments from council, starting with councilwoman Erin.
Thank you, your honor. I want to first say Happy Mother's Day to all of you all. I got an opportunity to spend Mother's Day, my first one, laying in my bed all day because I wasn't feeling well, but it was a great Mother's Day, and I hope you all had a great Mother's Day as well. What I noticed about this month of May may hold some very important national holidays. This month, last week, we celebrated National Teacher Week. This week here is National Nurses Week. Now we have implemented National Public Service Week and Police Week. And what I like about all of them, during the pandemic, none of us, those four jobs, stopped working. A teacher still had to teach, a nurse still had to nurse, a police still had to police, and public service still had to go forth. We have, and I'm saying we because I work in healthcare and I've been in healthcare for over 30 something years, we have some of the most demanding jobs that are out here, yet we get some of the least appreciation for what we do. So what I want to just say at this point is thank you to every teacher that has stood strong during this whole pandemic, altering their schedules, their lives, their way of teaching, to teach our children a different way and a different technique. Thank you to every nurse that stayed at a bedside and chose whether to go to work every day opposed to retiring and saying, I can't take it. You know, those nurses were there when some of the parents and patients' family members weren't there. So thank you to every nurse. Thank you to public service for being out here still collecting our garbage and shoveling our snow and making certain that we were able to walk outside and still smell a great fresh air. And to every man and woman in blue that walked through our streets and protected us during these last few years and even today, I want you all to know that you are appreciated and I love you and thank you all for all the hard work you have done. Also, May is, as one of the residents came up, Mental Health Awareness Month, and this month really, again, it holds such a special means to me. On May 19th is our Mental Health Day of Action, and that's the day for us to wear green. It's probably one of the only days I'll wear green, being that it's, you know, Mental Health Awareness Day, Day of Action. And what the hope is, is to inspire people to talk about their experience, to de-stigmatize mental health, and to galvanize a movement to drive culture and political and policy changes throughout our community. We want to find a way of making awareness into an action. It's one thing to constantly talk about mental health for one month, but I want this month to be this plan, to just continually to move forward, where people will feel safe to talk about what's going on and how things are changing in their lives and not be ashamed of what they're feeling and be able to express it, so we can take that awareness and move it into an action. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, councilwoman. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor, from, well, I guess, on the mental health awareness note, I'm sure we're going to have a proclamation or something at the next meeting, but just as a reminder to everybody, cities are filled with humans, humans have struggles that they don't always like to share, so just show kindness, give enough space, show empathy. You never know what somebody's dealing with. It could be their worst day of their lives and you're just going and standing in line to get groceries, so. One of the things that I want to point out, I don't know if everybody knows, but we have a disc golf course now at Rosie's Park, really excited about that. And as a kid who used to actually, you know, play basketball at the parks here in the city, I am stoked that we are able to get the backboard and rim back up at Wildwood. So, excited about those changes. It's not as big as what we did today by accepting the offer on the Active Adult Center as a part of the big civic center project, but those small changes will make a difference to our residents. My last thing, I missed one meeting, y'all, and you put me on a new board.
Congratulations.
Like, I watched it back and it's like, yeah, yeah, Mark knows. I mean, Mark's aware, but Mark didn't vote on it, so. No, I am looking forward to serving my, spending my time on the elections commission this year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bliss. Council Wright?
Thank you, your honor. I would just want to just say, just wanted to acknowledge our folks who are working in public services, public works folks. I'll tell you guys, last year, I got to see them firsthand when we put on the first Juneteenth, and I got to see their professionalism. I got to see how well the police took care of the citizens and how well they took care of our visitors and made it a fantastic event for the first time, and I just want to give real kudos, not in a trivial way, but like, you know, I even got to have those folks participate in our judging competition, for the rib competition, and that was something to see, but thank you guys for all that you do. Public service folks in particular, like, you guys don't get credit enough for like shoveling the roads and like doing the dirty jobs and our police force, like, we greatly appreciate you. Every time I see like the cars go by, the trucks go by, like, I just say a little like, you know, be safe and keep everybody safe as well. So, kudos to you guys with that. I wanted to touch on the mental health piece as well because I think a lot of times when we talk about all of these months, we talk about what we are going to do, but I want to challenge everyone to take action as to what like you can do. Mental health is not, and I got to take my thing off so I can read what I wrote on my phone, mental health is not about an extreme. It's not about you feel like you're going nuts or you feel like you are in an extreme. You have to take care of yourself mentally, just like you have to take care of yourself physically. And I do it by working out, I do it by talking to an actual therapist, I do it by talking to people around me, and that's not, that's not to say that I have an ailment, it's just to say I'm a human being. I'm a husband, I have three children, I have a full-time job outside of city council, and we have to normalize mental health being about us and not being about other people. So, if you've ever thought about mental health and wanted to talk to someone, I recommend you go to Psychology Today, you can look up therapists there, and it doesn't have to be about feeling like in an extreme, you can just have a really stressful job, and that's enough to go speak to a psychologist. There's also the Calm app, which was recommended to me by a therapist, as another way to just touch base. You can download it on your phone right now, everybody can download Calm, it's pretty cool, and you can meditate. So, when we talk about mental health, let's not take this just as like one of those campaigns that rolls in and rolls out, like next month we'll be talking about Pride Month. Take this as a challenge to figure out and do a sanity check as to what you're doing to maintain your mental health like we do your physical health. So, Happy Asian Pacific American History Month, Happy Jewish American History Month. I got to attend the disc golf cutting, ribbon cutting, and while I will be walking around it, it's good to see improvement happen in the community, something that people can tangibly see and feel. So, with that, if you can't remember anything else I said today or if nothing else resonates, just be kind.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, anything from the city attorney this evening?
Couple of comments, your honor. First of all, I hope everyone had a nice Mother's Day. Secondly, to Mayor Potemblis's point about being appointed to the election commission, he was the only eligible council member who could serve, but the city clerk and I promised to make it as entertaining as possible when we have our meetings, so you'll enjoy it, I predict. That's it, your honor.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh, anything from the city manager's office?
Yeah, a couple of things. The last, over the last couple of meetings, we've started talking about the new civic center project and how that's moving forward, so I want to start letting the residents know that starting June the 13th, this room that you're sitting in tonight will then handle all of the city hall staff. So these meetings are going to be held at Fire Station 1, so mark your calendars if you're planning on coming. We'll have signage up on the doors at that time too, but just to let everybody know ahead of time. Also, the State of the City will be held a week from Thursday, that's May the 19th, at the Associated Builders and Contractors located at 31800 Sherman Avenue, and that's off of Whitcomb. And last, the Parade Committee has been working really hard on the Memorial Day Ceremony, which is taking place this year, not a parade but a ceremony, and that will be Saturday, May the 28th, so mark your calendars for that as well.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Just real quick, the public will start receiving some mail from the clerk's office. First, you'll be receiving AV applications to those that are on our permanent absentee list, there's about 8,000 plus people on that, so look for those, there are red, white, and blue forms, and return those to our office. Those are for both the August and the November election. Also, you will be receiving new voter ID cards due to the changes in your legislative boundaries and associated numbers with those legislative boundaries, so you'll be getting those. And just to be aware, by law, I do have to still send those to people that may have moved, so if you're new to the community and you get a voter registration card and it's actually delivered to you, you can just call us and let us know. We already have them on Verify, but by law, I have to send that to give them due process to make sure that they know that we're going to cancel them. So, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Warbach?
We've all heard that this is Mental Health Aware this month, and this has been a really tough week for a lot of people throughout the country, especially women. And so, for those that are struggling with the news that have come out from the leaked draft of the opinion from the Supreme Court regarding Roe v. Wade and Casey, I just want to say to all of those that are worried and upset, please take care of yourself, take care of each other, and take action. So I believe that everyone deserves full access to health care for their bodies and for access to whatever it is that they need. I think too many state governments are taking action that would go into effect if Roe does get overturned, and I'm really angry and horrified at it. My story is that my husband and I tried for six years to have a child, to bring it home, and we tried lots of things. We tried UI, IVF, all kinds of medication. I had three miscarriages, I had a DNC, a couple of those, I had just lots of experiences with doctors and embryo transfers and all these kinds of things. And guess what? It was all between me and my doctor. Some of the laws that are being proposed at the state level here in Michigan and beyond are things that would criminalize the actions that I took in order to become a mother. And I believe it's wrong. I believe that the state, the government of any level has no business in my bedroom, in my doctor's office, and certainly anywhere below the melt. I, you know, some of the, some of the things that are going on, the opinion is really attacking Roe based on... are going on, the opinion is really attacking Roe based on the right to privacy. And that means that this affects not only women and people who are having babies and parents and all of that. This affects everyone. Because if you have a private life of any kind, this says that the government can get into that business. It affects the ability for LGBTA individuals to get married, to participate fully in society. It is the basis of the right for interracial marriage. All of these things are at risk when we talk about overturning this. So, I know, like, here on City Council, we're not making legislation that has to do with abortion and Roe v. Wade and all that stuff. That has nothing to do with us. But this is the end. This is when I get to tell you what I'm thinking. And so, for Mental Health Awareness Month, I hope that we all take care of each other and we realize that those conversations between our doctors, our mental health professionals, all of those things should be and should remain protected under the privacy of the statute of the Supreme Court. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Good evening. Good evening. So, today, I wanted to talk about our one ordinance that we passed today, which is the Vending Food Truck Ordinance. A couple of weeks ago, I seen on the internet that we had a post from a food vendor that wanted to be at a permanent location in our city, and I took it upon myself to look into it further. That's something that I think that we should all try to do for our citizens, is when we see something out there, or they come to us emailing you or calling you on the phone, that you can take care and try to see what we can do for them. I think that's really important. So, I did what I could do, and I called, I talked to our city attorney, and brought forward this idea that was kind of like on hold and needed to be kind of resurrected there, sort of, and about the food trucks. So I was really happy to see that it came to fruition so that now we can have some food trucks that are permanently at permanent locations, not just a permit for a special holiday or an event, but something that could be somewhere along the lines of, Ferndale has Detroit Fleet, which is kind of like what we're calling in our ordinance is a food truck court. So I'm looking forward to see what kind of new foods we can have around our city that people can participate in, that will be able to fit in with our current restaurants also. So that's basically all I'll have tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilman Soltes?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank Councilwoman Erin for, I am a newer teacher, and so I was in healthcare for many, many years, even during the beginning of COVID, and then I switched careers. So, I'll talk about that another time. But, you know, it's sad to me that we have to, I wish we didn't have to acknowledge Officer Memorial Week. I wish that there wasn't a need to do that, but unfortunately, there is. It hits home with me because my son is a deputy. So, you know, it's always in the back of my mind. In terms of statistics, and not that these officers are statistics, I mean, they have a family. They are human beings, and so far this year is one hundred and two deaths in the line of duty, and nineteen of those were gunfire. So that's, each year I recite these stats, and it doesn't seem to get any better. And I always had an appreciation for the officers ever since I got on council, but recently, I don't think I mentioned this, I had an incident at my house or my condo where it was, it was like ten, eleven o'clock at night, and someone's banging on my back door, and I thought it was my kids. So I went over there, and it wasn't my kids. It was some guy right there, right in front of the, trying to get in. And so, you know, I didn't know what, first thing I called was nine one one, right? And so, and I told the chief this, that they did a fantastic job. They were there as quick as any, I mean, to me, it seemed like forever, but looking back, it was very quick. They apprehended this person and without incident. And so, you know, again, thank you very much for all that they do. Again, it just showed me another appreciation for what they do. He did add to draw his gun. So, anyhow, but that worked out. And so, again, I appreciate all that they do. And, yeah, and so, that's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I would like to touch a little bit on the mental health as well. So I grew up with a parent who was, at the time, they called it manic depressive, but now it's called bipolar. But really, the easiest way to explain it, manic depressive, is everybody has good and bad days. You have to be watching me say this when I say it. It makes a lot more sense because you look at my hand. Manic depressive, you're manic, you're high, you're depressed, and you can go like that. And, you know, so I would get up in the morning, and I didn't know which father I would see. And I was pretty sure he was manic if he didn't go to sleep, but he would plan all sorts of things when he was manic, and then a few weeks later, when he was depressed, he couldn't even get out of bed. And he ended up getting help, which was really good, but I didn't know what it was, and I was a teenager trying to figure out what was wrong with my dad. And people did not talk about mental health. Even, you know, now we're sort of starting to remove the stigma, but back then, they didn't. And my mom was stuck because nobody knew what this was. No one knew how to do anything with it. And she's like, who do I talk to about this? And she ended up starting a support group, and the first meeting, it was standing room only, and it ended up becoming, it's now the Mood Disorders Association of Ontario, and it started with my mom. So, you know, I just want to show my mom a little bit of love here. Mother's Day, my mom, you know, biggest influence on my life, and this is what she did. You know, and she did this because she didn't know what else to do, but she needed help, and there was no one who was going to help her. And so she went out and she found that help, and it turned into this great little organization that's helping people now. With respect to seeing a psychologist, there are psychologists, there are therapists, there are social workers, there are psychiatrists, there's all sorts of different experts who do different things, and there's all sorts of different mental health. And Ms. Bush touched on a few of them today, and I think it's really important to realize that everyone has good days and bad days, and something happens and we're sad. Something didn't go my way, and I'm sad. That happens, and it's situational. It's when it continues for a long time. It's when there's nothing going on in my life that should really make me sad, but I feel something. And this word that she used today, the dysphoria, there's something wrong. That's where there's some kind of chemical imbalance. That's where there's some kind of wiring in the brain. And you can say to somebody, you have food to eat, you have clothes to wear, you have a family that loves you, you have all these things, but inside of them, there is something that just isn't connecting. And it is so hard to understand, and it is so hard to explain. And when we're talking about kids, when we're talking about our youth, it's even harder. So, it's really important to know, you know, is this something where I should just go for a walk, where I should just, you know, put on a comedy to make me laugh and I'll get out of it, or is this something where I really need to seek help? And this is a situation where a lot of times somebody reaches a point, and our first responders come out. And so I've talked to a few different people in the city about the response that our first responders have. This isn't really something that the city can handle. The system is set up that our first responders come, they do what they can, and if they need to remove somebody, they remove them from the house, they take them to the ER, and they pass them over, and they get, you know, this person gets put into the situation. But our police department have come out to nine one one calls. They've sat on the floor with kids, and they've talked to them, and they have listened, and they have treated them with such caring because they care. And it's really tough, but they have done that, and they have, you know, they have done that. I don't know what kind of training they have other than on-the-spot training, but they have done that. And so I want to shout out to our police department and to our fire department because never in my wildest dreams would I think that someone would call nine one one so that an officer could sit on the floor trying to coax a teenager out of a bathroom. But they've done that. Our guys have done that. Our men and women have done that, and they do that. Mental health has a stigma on it because of society, and society really needs to change that, and people need to recognize that it's a chemical imbalance, just like insulin, and it does not reflect on a person's character. So with that, please remember to be kind. You never know what kind of battle somebody is fighting. A lot of us put on, you know, the happy face, but you never know what's going on in the brain. You never know what's going on in their soul. So with that, our next meeting is going to be on May twenty-third, I believe. The time is now eight thirty-three. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.